Once we get started, I'm gonna, we're gonna mute everybody and then when you need to talk, if you could unmute yourself, that'd be great, just so there's no interference as we're talking. Looks like we still got a few people popping in. All right. Hey Dave, welcome.
Hey, quick question for you.
Yeah.
Do we have volunteers for tomorrow night?
I'm gonna ask that exact question today. You got me, I know that.
Perfect, I'm in.
Okay, yeah, I'll bring that up towards the end of the meeting and see who we can gather up.
What time tomorrow night?
Six o'clock.
Okay, at the Vet Center?
Yeah, the Memorial Park.
Okay. We need to bring tools.
Yes, if you have a rake and a shovel, hopefully just a rake, I'll bring some extras just in case somebody shows up without and we'll man them up.
Okay. I can even bring a small front and lower that red tractor if you want, is the dirt all in a big pile?
Dirt's in a pile and Builders Employm has donated a Bobcat that I'll be operating unless you have, I think you have experience there, Steve, you can operate.
Okay. I'll talk about that a little later. Thanks.
Steve, you got that rake too?
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks Dad.
Thank you Father.
Thank you Pops.
Okay, everybody. Thanks for joining us, I'm Steve Bajanski. I'll call the meeting to order here. I'm Steve Bajanski, I'm president of the Rotary Club in Nordonia Hills. Thank you everybody for coming. I'm looking, is John Graves here?
Yes, I am.
Hi John, great, would you do the invocation for us please?
Sure. Let's be in a humble spirit of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this glorious day, thank you for this meeting. Take note of our mission as Rotary International, as our district in this club. Bless our mission, bless the decisions that we make so that we may fulfill the Rotary four-way test in accordance with your will. We ask these things in your holy name, oh God, amen.
Amen. Thank you John. Now if I could stand and do the pledge of allegiance, Debbie can you try and throw that up on the screen? There we go. Everyone, I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now we have a lot of guests here today. I know that we have past District Governor Beverly Gant, Skrzynski, welcome Beverly. We also have our speaker today, who is our current Rotary International current director, Stephanie Erlich, thank you Stephanie, Urchik, thank you for coming Stephanie, we really appreciate it. Trying to think who else we have here, John, can you, is there anyone that I'm missing here? I know we have Rick Pollak of Cuyahoga Falls and I think Rick invited a lot of his members today. So Rick, if you could introduce any of the members of your Rotary Club, that'd be appreciated.
Sure, thanks Steve, thanks for inviting us. Our club meets at this same time, so we actually have a joint meeting going on here.
Great.
So I'm gonna ask, as I introduce members of the Cuyahoga Falls Rotary Club, go down to reactions down at the bottom and click on a thumbs up when I introduce you, so everybody can see where you are. Joe Huber. Joe's not finding the, all right. Jill Colasar. There we go. Roger Taylor. Lisa Coats. Kathy Romito. There she goes. Kathy Crabtree. Tom Nolan. Carol Klinger. And let's see who's on page two. Todd Nichols. George, is that you, nope, there's George, okay, he just moved on me. Rachel. And coming into the room, we have Scott Mitchell, I believe. That's it, I think we outnumbered you Steve.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you so much for joining us. And I'm briefly looking over everyone that's jumped in, John, am I missing any delegates that may have joined us besides?
I don't think so Steve. No, I think we're good Steve.
Okay, great. Well again, and welcome everybody, we certainly appreciate you joining us today. I'm scanning through just to make sure my family hasn't joined us, I'd catch a lot of grief if I'd introduced my wife and daughter, but I don't think they're here today, so we'll skip that. Casey, I think I saw you were here, Casey, do you have a day in history today?
Yeah, I do, so I've got three different things I thought you'd be interested in. The first thing is, July 15th, 2006, this San Francisco-based company officially started this messaging service. It started as a project where people would send free messages to one another in a single group. Obviously this has become much more popular as it rose to 140 different characters that you could send a message. Anybody know what that messaging service was? It was Twitter, so I don't know if you guys are commonly, it's commonly called Twitter. What I thought interesting is, one of the first names that was rejected was Friend Stalker, so if you're on Twitter, it was also gonna be referred to as Friend Stalker at the time, so there you go. July 15th, 1988, this movie, one of my favorites, it was an action film starring Bruce Willis as a wisecracking New York cop named John McCain, anybody know the name of that movie that came out?
Tyard.
Tyard, nice. And then this one, I'm sure everybody gets a lot of boxes every day from this company, if you're like my house, you do. On July 16th, 1995, this officially opened for business as an online bookseller and went months, it shipped to all 15 states and 45 different companies, and they know the name of that company that started?
Amazon.
Amazon.
So these two days are pretty popular days in this week in history, so there you go guys.
Thank you Casey, appreciate it. We do not have any birthdays in our club to announce this week or anniversaries. I don't know Rick, if there's any birthdays in your club that you would like to announce? Run it by us again Rick, we just, oh. There you go.
And the quick answer is, no, there are no birthdays.
I think I unmuted you when you unmuted yourself and I muted you again, sorry about that. Okay, Dr. Conkle, do you have any humor for us?
Just a quick one today. You know you're growing old when one for the road means taking a pee before you leave.
Okay, that's, I think I use that once in a while. Okay.
What age does that start at Dave?
You should know.
I admit nothing.
I think 58. Okay, any happy or sad dollars Carl?
Do we have any happy dollars?
I can certainly give one, I'm happy that the Rotary Club of Cuyahoga Falls is with us, thanks for joining us. And also some delegates, Chris, Stephanie and Beverly, thank you, those are my happy dollars.
I have one.
Go ahead Julie.
Well, as usual, I'm happy the weeks my newspaper comes out, but I'm also happy because Steve is on the front, for his Rotarian of the Year, it's on the front page, I don't know if you can really see it, but I'm gonna start dropping them off today at stores around town and they're already at Dunkin' Donuts, so if anybody wants to like run right out of the meeting, that's where they are. Very happy to showcase Steve and his family on the front page for all the good work he does.
And I certainly give a happy dollar of that too.
Carl, I have a happy dollar and that's to welcome Jill Colasar, former Director of Nordonia Hills YMCA and has moved on to the big house downtown, so to speak. And also another great face is Judge Coats. I can't call her Lisa because it's not appropriate, but anyhow, Judge Coats, thank you for coming and attending. My dollar.
Thank you Bill. Anybody else happy about something?
I'll throw a dollar in there for all the Rotarians that are gonna show up tomorrow at the Veterans Memorial Park.
And they're better not be any sad dollars for them not showing up. Thanks Dave. Anybody else?
I'll do one. Couple of months ago Rotary, the Rotary Foundation came up with a terrific idea with disaster response grants for COVID. And we put out word to all 51 clubs in the district, 51 at that time, 52 now, and asked if they would contact their local hospital and find out what they needed in the way of PPE. And we found out what they wanted, we submitted a grant and by the time we submitted it, the Rotary Foundation had spent all of the money, but they put us on the waiting list and we just got word the other day that our district has received a district response grant. We're gonna be buying isolation gowns for seven hospitals in our district and it's a $25,000 grant. So on behalf of the district and on behalf of my club, I'm happy.
That is fantastic news Rick, keep us posted on that if you would and anyway we can help you out, let us know. That's excellent news. I remember when that came out, cause I remember, I think I asked you if it was hospitals or if it also included, you know, rest homes and stuff like that, but it was really just a hospital.
If we had included, if we had gone after PPE for nursing homes, $25,000 would not go very far.
Yep.
Every nursing home in the district would get two masks.
Understood.
So we went with hospitals and it turned out, turned out to be good, we're shopping right now.
That's fantastic news, thank you. Okay. Let's move on to our speaker of the day, our speaker is Stephanie Urchik, she's Rotary International Director. Dr. Stephanie Urchik has considerable experience performing executive management organizational and leadership consulting and inspirational speaking in corporate and higher education environments. Stephanie is Partner and Chief Operating Officer of Doctors At Work, a consulting and training company aimed at assisting organizations and individuals with leadership development, communication, customer service and business development. Her academic credentials include an undergraduate degree in international relations from the University of Pennsylvania, a master's degree in education from Duquesne University and a doctorate in leadership studies from Indiana University of Pennsylvania. Stephanie is active in numerous community boards and committees. Stephanie became the first Athena Award recipient for Washington County PA, has been honored by Zonta International and the Sons of the American Revolution, has been named Rotarian of the Year by both her Rotary District and her Rotary Club and has received a distinguished service award from the Rotary Foundation of Rotary International. In September 2016 Stephanie appeared in the publication Women in Business that highlighted women from the 23rd county area of Pennsylvania who are making a difference. A Rotarian since 1991, Stephanie is a member of the Rotary Club of McMurray PA and has served Rotary as a foundation trustee, Chair of Rotary Strategic Planning and TRFs, Centennial Celebration Committees, member of the Atlanta Rotary International Convention Committee, RRLTI Moderator, International Training Leader, Regional Foundation Coordinator, President's Representative, District Governor, District Delegate of Two Councils on Legislation and as a member of various Rotary International Communities, Committees and in various club and district foundation roles. She is a major donor and a member of the Bequest Society of Rotary Foundation. Stephanie has participated in a variety of international service projects including National Immunization Days, Polio Prevention in India, Nigeria, the building of an elementary school in Vietnam, water filtration installation in Dominican Republic and mentoring new Rotarians in the Ukraine. Securing manomachry equipment and biopsy unit for the hospital in Poland was the district-wide TRF matching grant that Stephanie coordinated with the Rotary Club of Craytown. In its commemorative book, the Rotary Club of Craytown noted Stephanie Urchik as one of the agents helping the rebirth of Rotary in post-communist Poland. Currently, Urchik is helping to partner clubs and districts in the US with Rotary Clubs in Kosovo and Albania for humanitarian educational service. In Rotary year 2020, 2021, Stephanie will serve as Chair of Rotary International's Executive Committee. Thank you Stephanie, you have quite a resume here, we're really looking forward to hearing from you, thank you.
Thank you President Steve, that was the boring resume, I always call the Rotary bio the boring resume. What you really should know is, I used to like hanging out at Kelly's Island in Cedar Point, but those places aren't really good for social distancing right now, so I hope I can get back to them. Anyway, PDG John invited me today to talk with you about my favorite subject, the Rotary Foundation. So that's what I wanna do, I wanna have a chat, not necessarily a presentation and I wanna share with you some information about how the Rotary Foundation functions in our organization, how it plays a part in our strategic plan and the four priorities of the plan, a little bit more about what Rick talked about, how TRF responded to COVID-19 and then finally maybe end with the story about why I'm wearing this Nigerian outfit today, including this necklace, okay? And then I'll take questions if you have any, all right, so to get started, you know, we have a branding center in Rotary and several years ago, they came out with the Master Brand and the Master Brand is when we say Rotary and when we say that to the world, we know what it means. Rotary is the organization that our clubs belong to and you know, that we participate in the magic of Rotary. But internally, there are actually two parts to Rotary. One is the Rotary Foundation and one is Rotary International. Rotary International is the administrative part of Rotary and as a director, that's the part that I'm affiliated with right now. It's the branch of Rotary that provides support to districts and clubs. The other side is the Rotary Foundation and that's the arm of our organization that allows us to do the magic of Rotary, doing good in the world. Through the process of grants and our programs, we are able to do that magic. So when we say Rotary, it's important to know that really it means two different things, Rotary International as well as the Rotary Foundation. So you can see behind me the vision statement that serves as the umbrella statement for all of Rotary, for both Rotary International and the Rotary Foundation. Together we see a world where people unite and take action to create lasting change around the globe in our communities and in ourselves. And from that vision statement and the research that happened when I was chairing the Strategic Planning Committee, there were four priorities that came up and were strong sentiments from people around the globe who were Rotarians, non-Rotarians, Rotoractors, Rylarians, Interactors, anybody who had an affiliation with Rotary that we could reach, as well as people who left Rotary and people who never have participated in Rotary. We asked everybody, what do you think are the important things for Rotary as a service organization to look at? And they came up with four, four things bubbled up. And I wanna talk about each of them and how they relate to the Rotary Foundation. So the first one, the first priority is increase our impact. And by and large, this is totally, totally something that we can handle through the Rotary Foundation. You know, we have a number of programs that are impactful around the world, including our efforts to eradicate polio. From that, from that program, we have been able to leverage the legacy of our infrastructure. You may not know this, or maybe you do. When COVID hit, the people who were the door-to-door vaccinators had to stop because of the pandemic. The centers where children go to get routine immunizations are still open, but the door-to-door has stopped. But that doesn't mean that those people stopped. Those people became engaged in COVID-19 activities. So they were now doing COVID testing, they were now educating people about handwashing, hygiene. They were also monitoring our locations where the polio labs are still operating. So we have learned a lot about how to use our legacy of polio. And why is that important? It's important because that's an impact statement. You know, in the world, there are inputs, outputs, outcomes and impact. When we look at organizations or businesses or products, we want to know what is the impact of our involvement? And I have two good stories here. One of them is where Rotary did not do such a good job with impact. And it has to do with when Rotary International President Ian Reisley asked us to do something. Remember what he said, he asked us to plant trees and what did we do? We all went out and planted trees. It was something like over a million trees, we counted all of them, sent that information to Rotary and that's where it stopped. Input and output. What we should have done is figured out, how did that impact the world? How did that impact the environment? Did it do something to stop soil erosion? Did it have an effect on CO2? We didn't take it a step further, input, output, outcome, impact. Now a story where we did have great impact and that's with polio, from the get-go, from the beginning. We have been able to say to the world, when this disease is finally gone, there will be 11 million children a year who are not crippled and are walking and don't have to deal with the disease. We will be saving US $85 billion a year in healthcare costs for related things that won't have to happen. So we were able to talk about impact early and that got the attention, that got the attention of partners. You know, when we started the polio campaign in 1988, we had a handful of organizations that were with us. Now there are over a dozen, including the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, because we were able to say, this is the impact that we have. So as we look at our grants activity and our programs and the Rotary Foundation moves to improve our ability to achieve great things, that's where we will be able to show great impact. And if we want, if we want to attract new members, if we want to attract new partners, if we want to attract new donors, those are gonna be really important things, the impact statements. The second one that is a priority is the one that talks about expanding our reach. This one is about growing and diversifying our membership and people that participate with us and creating new channels into Rotary. How does that work with the Rotary Foundation? Well, because of the many great ways that Rotary, the Rotary Foundation creates opportunities, it can be an attraction for people. Rick talked about the fact that, you know, there was a great COVID response grant program that happened. And so people who were not in Rotary, who were looking at that, were suddenly saying, wow, that's really, that's really amazing and that's what our community needs, we need PPE, we need to do these things. We need to feed the people who are hungry in our communities. So all of those things create a public relations impact for Rotary and it happens because of the Rotary Foundation. The third one is expand and enhance participant engagement. And this is the one that I really love, because it talks about, what do we do for current members? How do we keep them engaged in wanting to continue with Rotary so that we don't have a retention issue? You know, in 2017, 18, we set a record in Rotary. We brought in more members into Rotary that year than ever before in the history of our organization. But we also set another record. We lost more members than ever before in our history, that's not a good trend they have. So that suggests that we really have a problem keeping the people who come to us. So we need to get better at asking people why it is they've come into our organization. Some come for fellowship, some come for networking, some want professional development, they wanna get better at speaking or leading, but many people come because they want to serve. They wanna do things in the community or internationally. And again, that's where the Rotary Foundation can step in, because it can help support the return on investment that those members are looking for. And finally, the fourth priority is increase our ability to adapt. Oh my God, we're in overdrive on this one. Think about it, when we were meeting in March, we were doing it the way we had been used to meeting for 115 years. We were going to a place, an office, a church, a country club, whatever, and we were meeting. That was ripped from us and we had no choice but to figure out how to keep connecting and we did it. We did it in a very short time, clubs like yours, the two of you, you have Clubs like yours, the two of you, you have figured it out. We did some unscientific research, and we think about 75% of the clubs around the world are meeting virtually. And considering access to technology and internet issues, that's, that's really quite a good number. I worry sometimes about the other 25%, but, but even they are, are connecting in different ways. But what that proves is that we can be innovative, we can be creative because we figured it out, and we're doing what the world craves, we're connecting. Now, it's not the same. It's not the same as getting a hug or shaking somebody's hand or sitting next to somebody, but look at all of us. Look at all of us looking at each other, we are connecting. And we are sharing information, and we are figuring out how, how to have virtual fellowship. Our challenge in this time is going to be how to continue to provide service in a pandemic world. And it's, it's only, it's only a while. We're not going to be this way forever. All right, eventually, there will be solutions. And we will continue to do the things that we had done typically. But we are also embracing this new way to do things. So we need to be creative and think about how do we serve? You know, what are the things that we can do now that will connect our people and make an impact for the people who benefit by our service? So the third thing, and I'm going to piggyback off of what, um, Rick talked about, is how the Rotary Foundation responded to the pandemic. Well, it goes back to March the 16th. On that day, all of the staff at Rotary, everybody, received a directive from our General Secretary John Hugo to take their laptop, take their phone, whatever they needed, and go home. Because the next day, everybody was going to do a test, they were going to work from home. And, and the test was to see if it could be done, if the bandwidth was there, if, if it worked. And the good news is, it did. Everybody was able to keep Rotary running, and on that very day, the governor of Illinois locked down the, the state. So the Rotary building itself shut down. So our staff was in place at home, ready to continue to do all the things they do. You know, Rick talked about the grant awards. All of that's been happening from home. The only thing, the only thing that can't be done is that the, the hardware for Paul Harris and other awards is sitting in Evanston in the building. And we can't get to it, but there are virtual certificates and virtual awards that are happening. So by and large, Rotary never missed a beat. We can't say that for other service organizations. President Mark Maloney last year invited the presidents of Kiwanis and Seroptemus, and I forget who else, you know, to a meeting when they were still able to meet in Evanston. And, uh, they started a, a collaboration of sorts. Well, when the pandemic hit, they had their final meeting virtually. And Rotary was the only organization that said it was able to keep going. Rotary was the first organization to say, we're not going to have our convention, but we're, we're ready to go with a virtual one. And the other ones had to play some catch-up. So our staff has been really responsive. The Rotary Foundation itself did two significant things. It heard from clubs who wanted to help their communities, and it created the COVID Response Grant, which Rick talked about. And initially, it transferred, the foundation transferred a million dollars from the World Fund to help support those grants. Man, that went quickly. So they took another step. They transferred $2 million from the World Fund. And that, of course, all went. And what happened is, we ended up with about 104 grants that were in the queue but couldn't be funded because the World Fund money was expended, and there was no place for that money to come from. So the Rotary Board of Directors stepped in. And at its June meeting, took a look at all of the money that has been saved because nobody is traveling. And they looked at that amount of money, and they decided to transfer it to the Rotary Foundation so that all 104 remaining grants, including yours, Rick, could be funded. So all of the COVID grants that were accepted to that point have been funded. So that's a great gift to our communities who are looking for help and support. Um, two final things that I want to do. One is just share with you why I'm wearing this crazy outfit today. This morning, I was zooming in Nigeria. So I put my Nigerian shirt on, and I also put this necklace on. This necklace is a piece of wood. Um, and it was given to me by a woman in Nigeria after I had immunized her babies. Nigeria was the second place I had ever been to do a National Immunization Day. And on that day, uh, there were 100 of us, and we were split up into 50 teams. And two people went here and two people went there. So a fellow from Canada, and I returned from Canada, and I went to this small village. And so when they talked about what needed to be done, I said to him, have you ever given the drops? He said, no. I said, well, you do that, and I'll do whatever else needs to be, needs to be handled. So he went off and he went with the healthcare workers and he did the drops. My job, according to the Rotarian in the village, was to go into the huts in the village and to check all the rooms and make sure that all the babies had the purple mark on their finger, all the children. Because that meant that the health worker had been there and that they had received the vaccine. So it was hot, it was 104 degrees or somewhere. So, you know, I'm soaking wet, I'm walking through all these huts. And I came to one, and we found, in the back, I found a little boy who did not have the mark. So I went outside and we called a healthcare worker, and that little boy got the drops. And that's the house where the woman came up to me, and she simply said, thank you, and grabbed my hand. And when I looked down, it was this necklace. So it was a very precious gift from a mother who was recognizing what Rotary was doing to help give her children a better life. And that's the power of Rotary. Not all of us in our clubs have a chance to do that. But if we do, I hope, um, we continue to share those stories because it's important for people to understand the return on their investment. When we give to the Rotary Foundation, it's not just a contribution of money. It's saving a child from a crippling disease. It's feeding families, it's providing eyesight. It's giving families drinking water that they don't have to walk miles for. So our, our investment in the Rotary Foundation is really an investment in doing good in the world. And finally, I just want to say, um, congratulations to past District Governor John Bosco because I understand that he was recently awarded with the Michael J. John Senior Lifetime Achievement Award. So congratulations, John, and I hope you'll all join me. Let's give him a virtual round of applause. That's an awesome recognition. Um, very well, well deserved, well, well deserved, for sure.
Thank you, Stephanie.
So I'm going to stop talking and ask if any of you have questions about the Rotary Foundation that I can answer or anything about Rotary. You've got a director on the call, so I'll field anything. I might not have the answer, but I can get it for you. Anything, put them in the chat window, or raise your hand, or Steve will help monitor, see if there are any questions from anybody.
Any questions about it?
Not seeing any, so, uh, thank you.
We know George, George over here, we, I think we have one.
Okay.
I'm sorry, George, you're muted again. There you go.
Get me in? What was, what was Nigeria like? I mean, uh, what, what, what was the, you talked about huts. Did they have, uh, uh, available water? Um, were you near a city or, uh, just explain more about Nigeria. I have a great deal of, of sympathy for the, uh, uh, Central Africa and Eastern Africa, where the GDP per capita is like less than $1,000 a year. And, uh, I'd appreciate hearing that. Secondly, with your Pittsburgh accent, are you a Steelers fan?
Well, I'll answer that one first.
One more thing, one more thing, I'm a, I'm a graduate of Penn also.
Oh, great, okay. Well, we have something in common. Uh, I'll answer the second question. Yes, I am a Steelers fan, but a fan is a fan is a fan. So, um, regrettably, I'm not sure any of us are going to get to see much football this season, so I hope I'm wrong. Um, I hope that they, they do get to play. So the first part of your question about, um, Nigeria, uh, I was in Lagos, which is the, I believe it's the third most populous city in the world. There were people everywhere. And you're absolutely correct about the poverty, although it is a major city. Um, you know, much of the city is, uh, in huts and the outskirts. Um, there is, there was, and it's been a while since I've been there. There was a, an issue with trying to manage refuse. So what they would do is put it at the end of the road and burn it. So when you're in Lagos, when we were in Lagos, there was always a constant smell of smoke in the air. Uh, just because they didn't know what to do with refuges. Uh, water was an issue. Uh, we were not able to drink any tap water, or there wasn't much ice anyhow. But, you know, we were all, um, provided bottled water, brush your teeth with bottled water. Um, so water was an issue. Uh, most of the villages had wells that were not necessarily in the village. So many times, children, that was their job, to take buckets twice a day. Walk to the well, get water, bring it back, then again, second time, walk to the well and come back. So you can imagine what that meant for the educational system. I mean, if children are, are busy walking and bringing water, they can't be in school. So there were a lot of issues, um, in all of our areas of focus, all of them, all seven, that were, um, evident in Nigeria. And our mission, the reason for us going there was twofold. Uh, first, we were participating in an immunization day. But secondly, in our zones, when we were all connected back then, Zone 28 and 29, we were looking for, we were looking for things to do that we could partner Nigerian clubs with clubs in our zones and make some magic happen. And we were able to do some of those. There were some water projects that developed. There were some microfinance projects that developed. One in my own district where we provided, um, microfinance so that women could buy sewing machines and fabric and start a business and then pay it back. And so it was sustainable so that they could continue to bring, bring other women in.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your efforts.
Sure, sure.
Stephanie?
Yes.
What's, what's the latest on polio?
Uh, well, the polio news is, um, that, as I mentioned, we've come to a screeching halt. Uh, Nigeria is coming off, in August, it's coming off the endemic list. So we have two countries left, Afghanistan and Pakistan. And they continue to be problem areas primarily because of conflict and because of religion. Uh, the Muslim clerics are very fond of telling, um, people that uh, the vaccine will sterilize their children, don't, don't, don't give your kids any vaccine. Uh, there was also, um, years ago, they were saying George Bush peed in the vaccine. I mean, all kinds of crazy stuff. So it, it's been difficult to get people in those places to understand the importance of vaccines. However, we have some Rotarians in India who have worked very diligently to create bridges with the Taliban and with ISIS and with others. And they've brokered meetings, which governments can't even do. And they've brokered some meetings, and in some places, they've been able to actually get some of those leaders to have their children immunized in front of others so that people see that it is safe. So when we're able to get back to our mass immunizations, we'll do that. But in the short term, the answer is, we can't get the vaccines to where the children are right now.
Thank you.
Hey, Stephanie, my name is Bob Adore. Sorry if I can't. But, uh, I was just wondering, I heard last night that, uh, Rotary International was coming out with, uh, a new youth protection bill. Uh, they changed youth protection rules some fashion recently. Do you know anything about this?
I, I think your question was, is there a new youth protection rule or policy?
Yeah, and they're, they're coming out with a new guide, you know, in.
But, well, I have not heard of any new policy. Um, I have heard of some changes because of the pandemic in terms of when long-term and short-term would, would once again be available for students. So that might be what you're referring to. But in terms of policies, uh, in terms of how we handle youth protection, I am not aware of any changes.
Okay, any other questions for Stephanie? Okay, I don't see any.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, President Steve, for inviting me, and thank you, Rick. Uh, it was a pleasure being with both of your clubs today. The magic of technology, great, thank you all.
Thank you so much, Stephanie, for joining us. Uh, you were fantastic, thank you, thank you. The information was great. Um, just have a few announcements that I would like to make. Uh, as Stephanie had, uh, mentioned earlier, um, our past president and, uh, past District Governor John Bosco received the Michael Johns Award. Uh, for those of you who don't know about this award, uh, it's for demonstrating to all Rotarians in District 6630 the highest leadership qualities of humanity, integrity, empathy, and friendship, and for his unwavering support of Rotary International, Rotary Foundation. Uh, again, congratulations to you, John, that's, it's a well-deserved award, thank you.
Thank you. That's a great picture too, isn't it?
Well, that's, I had to show that picture, John, because I know you love it.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.
I also wanted to let everybody know that, uh, Carolyn Posthumously received the Gary M. Newman Award. Um, this was quite an honor and, uh, well appreciated. It's awarded for her sharing in the spirit of Rotary through her exemplary efforts and active involvement in Rotary District 6630. So, uh, congratulations to Bob and Carolyn, it's a well-deserved award. Um, I also want to talk about the Shoebox Program. Uh, as everyone knows, our club is getting 20 shoeboxes. Um, and Debbie has put together a list, a signup list. Uh, we don't have the shoeboxes yet, there was a slight delay on them. Uh, we, we hope to get them by the end of, uh, actually, it'll be in August, I guess, is when we're going to get them. But I'd like to start preparing for it and people start signing up. Uh, we do have a list, uh, so people can start buying their items. Uh, Debbie, did you want to show the signup list? So anyways, we have a signup list. Uh, the best way to do it, uh, I don't know if Debbie can do a virtual up sign-up, or maybe the best way is just to email Debbie and let her know what age group range you want and, uh, and, uh, you know, that you want to take on one of the shoeboxes. Now, please be aware that a couple of people can team up also if they'd like. I've had a couple of people say, well, I want to supply this and that. Well, uh, let's team up and, uh, see if we can get all these filled. Uh, there's only 20 of them, we did 10 last year, we fill them no problem. Uh, so I don't think it's going to be that big of a deal to do 20 of them. Uh, Debbie, did you want to add to that? Debbie, did you want to add to this?
Yeah, I can just, like, get a link for Google Drive or something and then everybody can just go in there and put their name in.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll post it up there.
You can see three of them already have been taken, so we have 17 more left.
Like Steve said, you could have two or even three people participate in each box. And then you could see, you know, I've got male or female here and then the age range. And then that sheet that Steve sent to everybody has the list of things that you would need for each age range.
So basically, we have a shopping list for males and females. If you don't have that list, let Debbie or myself know and we'll send it off to you again.
I'll put that on the Google Drive, too.
Oh, perfect. Okay. So the shoeboxes are moving along. There's just been a delay because of the COVID thing. Okay. Also, I wanted to let everybody know that, I'm not sure if I can find it now. Anyways, we got a nice thank you letter from Life Water. Our club gave to, everybody saw, I'm trying to think her name. Everyone got to enjoy Katie's spot. She spoke Zoom to our Rotary Club a few weeks ago. We gave to her Life Water. Katie ran across Boston to generate money for Life Water. We got a very nice thank you note from them. I just wanted to let everybody know that. Lastly, tomorrow, we have, we are going to go to the Veterans Memorial Park. They have some brand-new sidewalks that they installed. We're going to do some landscaping over there. We're going to backfill along the edges of the sidewalk. We need volunteers to do that. Dave and I are going to be there. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of others. Should be a lot of fun. We do have some power equipment to help move the dirt so we don't have to move wheelbarrows. So bring a rake and a shovel and let's see if we can dress this Veterans Memorial Park up. Some of you that haven't seen Memorial Park yet, you really need to check it out, right in downtown Macedonia there. It's really coming around. It's just a beautiful area. As most of you know, our club has asked for a grant to install Memorial there also later on this year. This is just part of our efforts to help beautify the rest of the park. So please join us tomorrow. We have a schedule for tomorrow and Thursday. We're all going to meet there at 6 o'clock PM after work. If we get it all done tomorrow, we don't have to be there Thursday. So we'll see what we get done. Have anything else to add, David?
No, you covered it pretty well. The only question I had for John Bosco, were you planning on being out there tomorrow, John?
Yeah, I'll be there, Dave.
Awesome. And all I ask for you is for the plaque on the shelter that we did the year before. Yeah, Tyler's going to be out there, my son. He claims that I don't know how to operate a machine. Rick, you have something to throw in there?
Yeah, I want to screen share for a second if I can. The online virtual convention from, which was not in Hawaii, continues with breakout sessions through the month of July. And I shared this list with my club. But if you Google Hawaii Convention, you'll be able to find the July breakout sessions. And some of them are just absolutely fabulous. And this one on July 16th at 2:30, whoop, I lost it there, on adult harassment in Rotary. It's actually being hosted by Jenny Stotts and Jeff Porclin. So these are definitely worthwhile.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that out to our attention.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, let's see. I think that's it. Our next week's speaker is Tina V. Roncon. He's a Business Development Director of Astoria Health. And also, I wanted to bring to everyone's attention that we received some more grant money from last year's grant. As you recall, last year, we were going to be awarded $3,500. But because there were so many grants that were awarded, it went down to about $2,500. Well, some of those grants were never fulfilled. So they turned around and sent us $700 back. So it went back up 700 bucks from the $2,500. So that's a good thing for our club and it went right into our foundation account. So I wanted to let the club know that. With that being said, is there anything else that everyone would like to add?
I just wanted to add real quick to remind people to send links to the meetings to their friends. I invited Christine Bissler today and a couple of other people. It looks like she was able to pop on. You know, it's a great way to share what we're talking about with people and, you know, sharing the good deeds that we're doing.
That's a good point. And we want as many people to join us possible. Just give us a little heads up because Debbie, she works the, you know, trying to do the security. She works that waiting room. And so when a name pops up, it's nice that she's familiar with it.
Yeah, that's a good reminder.
So, said, I would like the Rotarians to recite the four-way test. Debbie, can you pull that up? All Rotarians, of the things we think, say, or do, first is the truth. Second is,
Second is fair to all concerned.
Third, goodwill and better friendships. Fourth,
will be beneficial to all concerned.
Thank you, Debbie.
Steve, thank you very much for inviting us. Stephanie, it was good to see you and hear you again.
Yes, thank you so much, Stephanie. We really appreciate it. And Rick, thanks for your club joining us. It's a pleasure. It's fun when, you know, when two clubs can get together and share the speaker. We'll have to do it again.
Yep.
Steve?
Yes.
One real quick note. With Safety Town, through the efforts of Dave Fike and myself, we are getting ready to contact the people with storefronts to up their contract for another five years. Actually, it's going to be six. But we will probably have that by next week.
Fantastic. That's great news. We need to get that rolling.
Yes.
Perfect. Anybody else? With that said, eating adjourned, but yes.
Sorry, just wanted to say hello. We got on late. I thought it started at noon. For me, it's 11 o'clock here.
Welcome, David.
We're in a bad land, so this is not a, this is not a background. This is not a backdrop. That's actually it.
Well, that's absolutely beautiful, David.
Yeah, we figured we'd come out here and start seeing the US again since we seem to be changing what our beliefs and values are with regard to it. But we're enjoying the day.
Well, it's beautiful. I'm glad you were at least able to join us so we could see that beautiful backdrop. It's gorgeous. Thank you.
All right, we were late.
No problem. Thank you.
Have a good day.
You, too.
Bye.
All right, everybody, thanks again. You enjoy the rest of your day. And we'll see everyone tomorrow.